So Lisa's candidate, I want you to say you understand the organization. The chair closest to me is candidate one, two, three. We're going to rotate those as the questions go. So first question goes to Lisa. Oh, I'm sorry. Introduce yourself, please. There.
Testing.
And it's a little hot.
Testing.
And I apologize not having a third mic. You'll have to share.
That's all right.
It is an improvement. Our last forum, we had one.
So welcome. My name is Lisa Herbold. I am the current council member representing you at City Hall. I represent West Seattle and South Park. I'm the first District One representative for the City Council. When I ran in 2015, I ran on a platform of addressing many of the structural inequities in our city related to a really upside-down tax system that also not only affects homeowners and residents, but it also affects small businesses. I have chaired the council's Economic Development Committee, and I've taken some really hard votes on that committee to represent small businesses. For instance, I was the only council member who voted against the sugary beverage tax because of my concern of its regresivity, but also because of my concern on its impact on small businesses. I also was the lone council member to stand up against the proposal to expand the areas in which developers don't have to provide parking, again, because of my concern that that would have a negative impact on small businesses. When I worked to fulfill a campaign commitment I had for better laws for workers in enacting the Secure Scheduling Legislation, I worked with small business and ensured that we exempted small business from that Secure Scheduling Law to give some certainty to workers who have to juggle many jobs and family obligations with only a moment's notice of their schedule. But we exempted small retail as well as small restaurants. And there are several other things that I've worked to do. I've been working to establish, create a legacy business program with tools through the Office of Economic Development to help sustain businesses in our community that provide a path to our history, our city's history, and specific neighborhoods, and that the Economic Development will work with those businesses to make sure that they can sustain their businesses that we care a lot about throughout the large amount of development that's happening in business districts throughout the city. I'm known as being the person that you can call as it relates to business issues, even when you're not hearing back from your own council member. I worked with small businesses on the app to exempt the app from the mandatory housing affordability program because of concern that the upstones proposed for the app would displace the small and minority and women-owned businesses there. I responded to them in the university app because their own district council member wasn't responding to their calls for help. Likewise, I've worked with other businesses and business districts throughout the district to advance their needs, both here in West Seattle and outside.
Thank you. My name is Brendan Coley. I'm running to represent you on Seattle City Council, District One, which, as you probably know, is West Seattle and South Park. I'd like to thank South Seattle College for hosting this event. Interesting fact is that South Seattle College is actually the largest employer in District One. The amount of jobs it has escaped my mind, but I really respect the college for being an important part of our community and our job base here in District One. I support community colleges as an important way for people to access education, whether it be on their path to a four-year degree or just a class they'd like to take, or a two-year degree or some sort of certification. I really value South Seattle College and its role here in District One. I also would like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this event. This is another well-attended event that we've had many of over the course of this campaign. I appreciate the role that the Chamber of Commerce plays here in District One. I think we have one of the more robust local district-level chambers of commerce in the city. I really enjoyed, over the course of this campaign, getting to know a number of the business owners and a lot of the small businesses here in District One, and I've heard a lot of feedback from them. It's been a pretty steep learning curve for me, having not been a small business owner myself, but what's been consistently reinforced to me as I've met a lot of business owners is that my top three priorities as a candidate, which are homelessness, public safety, and fiscal responsibility, directly relate to the experience of owning and operating and working at a business here in Seattle. If people are living in tent encampments in front of a small business, it discourages customers. If RVs are surrounding your small business, it's hard to keep your customers. It's hard to deal with the trash that's around. If there's crime, if product is leaving your store that you can't replace, that has a lot to do with your bottom line. So public safety has a lot to do with small business. If people don't feel safe going into your neighborhood, it's hard to make money. Also, if you don't feel that the tax revenue you're providing to the city is used effectively, it's very discouraging, and I think that has a lot to do with why some of our small businesses in District One and elsewhere are choosing to relocate, which to me is very sad. I know a lot of people are hanging on, waiting to see how this election will go. I'm committed to serving the business community and making Seattle a vibrant, thriving city that's very friendly to small business and as well as education, like institutions here at the college. So I'm very much looking forward to this event, and thank you for attending.
Hello. My name is Philip Tavell. I am also running for Seattle City Council for District One, and thank you all for coming out tonight. I know giving up one of our beautiful summer nights is very difficult in Seattle, so coming inside tonight is a tough choice, but thank you. And thanks to the West Seattle Chamber and as well for the blog being here and to South Seattle College. We have a wonderful venue again. So I'm here for the simple reason that I think Seattle can do better. I think we have issues with homelessness, with public safety, with transportation, with affordability, and many others, but those are definitely the four that are the most important to me. We have a city right now that's not helping the people that need the most help, and at the same time, it's also not helping the people that have been here, paying tax, living here, who've seen these changes occur. I've been here for 21 years now, and the city that I saw in 1998 was a big giant town. It was a loving place. It was a place that had incredible potential, incredible resources, and over the last 21 years, we have exploded in size, and we've really entered an urban adolescence that I don't think we were prepared for. And I think right now, we're dealing with a city that has those growing pains and doesn't know what to do. And some of the things that we need to be doing that we're not is doing better to support the people here and the businesses here, I think is a big part of that. You know, taking a look at the city's charter, the preamble talks about several things that the city is supposed to do. One of them is promote prosperity. And the truth is, levies and taxes and increasing fees and putting more and more pressure on businesses doesn't promote prosperity. Allowing the Office of Economic Development to come out and work with businesses and people in the community and have them find ways to do better and get through hard times and expand their businesses and employ more people, that is how we promote prosperity. Just to give you an idea, I was a physics teacher. I had a video game company. I had a retail store that sold games and collectibles, and for the last 15 years, I've been a public defender for the most part, and also a pro temp judge in King County District Court. One of the problems we're looking at right now really is with our criminal justice system, that there needs to be reforms. It needs to be better used as the safety net that it can be, instead of a revolving door that when people come into jail and they're homeless, we shouldn't be just releasing them into that same situation. We need to have community programs set up that can help people get out of those situations. But in general, we just need to do a better job listening to everybody in our community, not just the local minorities. We need to understand that it's difficult to run and own a business, and I think we have a council right now that doesn't have a single business owner on it. And that's an issue, because there is a holistic nature to having a business where things are interconnected, and you've got to know how that all works together. So I am running for City Council for District One because I think we need some new experiences. We need some new skills, and I think this city still is an amazing place, and I intend to make sure that it reaches its potential.
Thanks, everybody. So moving on to questions now. Lisa, candidate one will give the question, then we'll be rebutted and followed. Question one, Mike, go with everyone. Homelessness. You all know that a large amount of city resources are being expended to help solve the issue. Please name one new idea that you would propose to further address this issue.
So regardless of what the conditions are that lead to somebody's homelessness, and people have a lot of different ideas about what causes homelessness, in some cases, it's drug addiction and mental health issues, economic issues, domestic violence. Regardless of what causes somebody's homelessness, the solution to their homelessness is always going to be permanent housing. And so I am proposing that we double our investment in what's called permanent supportive housing over the next four years, the remaining four years of the levy, to make a massive investment in permanent supportive housing. Permanent supportive housing is the model of housing that everybody succeeds in regardless of their barriers. People who have mental illness, people who have drug and alcohol addiction, and people who are disabled stay successfully housed in permanent supportive housing because of the wraparound human services associated with it.
Brendan?
My biggest concern is that we currently have people living in illegal and undignified and unsafe situations between permanent housing and homelessness itself. So I'm a big advocate for the FEMA-style tent model as a way to achieve emergency housing for people until we can get them permanent housing. I've traveled to San Diego to review what they do. $800,000 gets you a tent. $36 a day can provide food, shelter, and services for people, so that's my new idea.
Thank you. My idea is to work within the criminal justice system, that the people who are released from jail that are currently homeless need to enter into a temporary housing situation that's got the wraparound services to provide mental health support and substance abuse support, vocational training, and a pathway to permanent housing. That one of the first things we have to do is we've got to stop that revolving door for the criminal justice system, and we're not going to do it unless we put a program in place to utilize the services we have.
Follow-up, please.
Follow-up being to...
If you'd like to add anything to follow my question.
Anything to add? I think I just want, I guess, to add is that I actually proposed exploration of the FEMA-style tent during the budget process last year. It actually came out of an audit that I commissioned of the city's navigation team, and so this was a recommendation of the city auditor to explore. I, along with Councilwoman Proscata, proposed some funding to explore that, to see whether or not it was feasible. I did not get the support of my colleagues. I do intend to bring it up again as it relates to the type of housing that Mr. Tavell discussed. That is another form of permanent supportive housing.
Thank you. Brendan, next question. What ideas will you bring forward in your term to help improve the health of small business?
I appreciate that question. The health of small business really is related to the health of the local community, and that's something that I've learned as I've met with small business owners. There's a lot of concern about everything from our parking situation to our housing situation, to our transportation situation. I was talking to a small business owner yesterday who's concerned about where her employees are going to be able to park when the junction does its rezone, or its parking rezone thing, and we can't ignore those problems, and they do have to do with the general health of the rest of the community. Public transportation right now, I'm consistently being told by people who run small businesses, isn't feasible for them to commute or for their employees to commute because of the hours they have to work. The local situations regarding crime and homelessness are also uncomfortable for a lot of these people. I've heard a lot of people who are considering moving. I've also heard a lot of people who feel unsafe coming to and from work because of situations in the local community.
The first thing I'm going to have is I'm going to have a small business liaison in my office, someone whose job it is to be going around specifically into District One, but also to all of the other districts, to make sure we're understanding the problems that small businesses have. But the other two things are, one, being proactive about going out to the small business owners and talking to them ahead of time before we're proposing legislation or finding out what they need, and the other one is being reactive and actually going out and having conversations all the time to find out how the city is doing by our small business owners.
I'm going to model another idea that we piloted during my first three years as a council member. I worked to support small businesses on 23rd Avenue to get a business stabilization fund when there was a big city transportation project going through there, and those small businesses were losing funding. We are going to be announcing in the next couple of weeks a citywide business stabilization fund to address just those issues. And then because of an idea of a business owner in the Lunapark Business District, we are going to actually, next time we go out for a levy, we're going to include a 1% for business stabilization with the levy so that we have the funds to address the impacts to businesses from our large construction projects.
So I'll finish up where I left off, that 60 seconds there. So it does have to do with taking care of the health of the general community. We do need those basics like parking, like public transportation. We need to solve the homelessness epidemic, and we need public safety. We do need to make sure our communities are safe for businesses, for their employees, for their shoppers. We also do need, I agree, we do need to take the pulse of the community and be very communicative with them and listen to their needs and make sure we understand what we as a city can do to support them.
Okay, Bill. Question number three. This goes back to the construction mitigation. Recently, there are some small businesses in our West Seattle community that have been negatively impacted by traffic construction. Are there steps that you would propose to help mitigate these impacts, and what would that look like?
Well, I think the first thing it would look like is when you know you've got a project coming and you're pretty far off, you go out and you make a contact with those businesses first. You let them know exactly what's going to happen, and you talk to them about some of the unforeseen consequences that might be occurring that the city doesn't realize. So if you're not doing that, then you're not preparing them well enough. And when you do that, we do need to have a fund out there that can mitigate the response because these businesses go through a very tough time. I know talking to people at Shaq and Lunapark Cafe and Avalon Blast, they did not see the length of this happening, the effect that it was going to have, and it really cut down on their business. And it's the city's job and the Office and the Department of, sorry, the Office of Economic Development's job to be out there ahead of these issues, finding out exactly what the city can do to help, because this is the city doing construction, making a change and making an impact. So we do, as the city, owe it to the small businesses to speak to them first and find out what we can do to help them.
So I actually facilitated several meetings leading up to the Avalon project, the transportation project, and we actually worked well with ESTA and the staging of the project and making sure that the impacts did not hit their peak times. And it took a lot of time and a lot of energy from my office and from myself personally and sitting down and having those meetings, but again, I think we need to have something sustainable that is a model for future transportation projects.
Thank you.
My solution to this issue, which hits a lot of people in this chamber very dearly, is to proceduralize the task of approaching small businesses when there will be construction in front of their project and make sure that we do give them adequate time, make sure we can do the best we can to keep their business accessible, keep them able to promote themselves, give them adequate warning, and also do have a fund to help compensate them for some of the losses that they will incur, because it is not good for business to have that going on, and it's something we can very easily wrap into the cost of these projects.
So when the city, whoa, I'm sorry. When the city is going to set up projects like that, and the city knows ahead of time that there are going to be these impacts, it should be the city, it should be the representative from the district that is in those businesses the first day. It shouldn't necessarily come down to other business owners in the community to put a shout-out on social media, say, "Hey, come support these businesses. They're having a rough time." That's something that should be coming officially from the city and from our representatives.
Lisa, back to you. No, there's a new question. One of the big issues for a number of our member businesses is parking. Do you think the newly announced Junction RPZ plans make sense?
So that is a community-initiated project. They collected signatures and petitioned ESTA to put forward that RPZ, and it is something that the City Council has no authority or intersection with ESTA to influence. It's a purely community-driven process with the decision-making held by ESTA. And so I don't feel that it's appropriate for me as a council member to intervene in a community-initiated recommendation to ESTA. We're doing fine.
Yes, you're doing very well. So in regards to whether the new RPZ makes sense, I think that's a fascinating question. This would take more than 30 seconds to unpack, but what I'm aware of, my children's school is within the new RPZ. The school was not consulted when this was developed, so I don't know that the plan included every single entity who had an interest in that feedback on this. So to that extent, I don't think so.
So obviously, it's, you know, it is the job of the council to be out in front of these things and be talking to people. We've got a lot of different forces at work with this one. We have people who are interested in the park-and-hide people and how they can use those spaces. We've obviously got with the businesses and the employees, there's a lot of interest in how this is going to impact their ability to park and get to work. I know after, you know, the survey that came out made it pretty clear that it was right around 50/50, so I think we're going to have to pay very close attention to see how this goes for the first year, what the response is.
Do you want to add anything, Lisa?
Yeah, I'm just like that. I think monitoring the impacts of the RPZ makes a lot of sense. We're already hearing about some overflow into areas of Junction that aren't, that are butting the RPZ, and now they're feeling the impacts. It's an inevitable outcome, but again, this is a community, it was a community-driven proposal, one that was supported by the Junction Neighborhood Association as well as, I believe, the BIA.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we're going to have a lightning round. In front of you, you will see cheery Christmas yes-and-no cards. I'm going to ask you a sequence of simple yes-and-no questions. Have you attended a meeting of your neighborhood council in the past year? Have you ever applied for a neighborhood matching fund grant? Do you speak any language other than English? If the head tax issue were to come up again, would you support it? Do you think that our West Seattle small businesses are being taxed fairly? Are they taxed fairly? All right, thank you. That was the lightning round. Very exciting. Brendan, Brendan's question is for you. This has been mentioned before. Transit options in the West Seattle Peninsula are quite limited. We must remember that not everyone that rides a bus is going downtown. What proposals could you bring forward to help our neighbors move around more easily?
I think there's two issues there. I appreciate the question. One is more easily within West Seattle, and one is to get from West Seattle to places other than downtown. I like the idea of continued service that serves a loop within West Seattle. That's currently an option. As far as getting other places downtown, I think we do need something that bypasses downtown. I took the 120 for many years when I was working downtown. That worked very well for me. When I needed to get, for Elvedore, when I needed to get past downtown, it was very arduous. So we need to work with King County Metro to get some options that will kind of shuttle us out of West Seattle and into perhaps North Gate, South Center, other options like that. But it's important to keep an eye and ear into the community's desires for this, because that's something I've heard quite a bit as I've been outdoor going and talking to the community, is the public transportation options are somewhat limited around here.
Well, I think like we saw during Viadue when we had a connector coming around District One, I think that worked really well. I think we need to look to expand that. I know one thing I've been talking about recently also is looking at a shuttle bus that would take people to and from the farmer's market on Sunday. And, you know, it's like when Seattle last hit districts 100 years ago, we also had a streetcar that ran up and down California Avenue, and then we lost that after we became part of Seattle. And so I think connector and working on the water taxi and other things are the way we can improve that.
So I'm a member of something called the RTC. It's a regional transit committee. I represent the city of Seattle on a regional committee that is focused on making decisions around bus service, and I've been an advocate for adding bus service. I've successfully received additional bus service for District One in each of the 56, the C, the 120, and the 131, and I'm going to continue to do so. As it relates specifically to the 56, that was a bus route that I heard about when I was campaigning in 2015 and made it a priority, and it is one of those buses that doesn't necessarily serve a community option.
So I think with public transportation, the most important thing to keep in mind is the first part of the term "public." We need to continue to listen to the public's desires and be open to the fact that the routes that are necessary in 2019 might not be the ones that are necessary in 2025, 2030 as we look at the light rail coming and patterns of work change. We look at density increasing and decreasing, perhaps in different areas. We need to continue to make sure that we're reviewing our public transportation options and amending them as appropriate.
Next witness. City Council recently voted 9 to 0 to endorse a Green New Deal for Seattle. The resolution says we should eliminate our city's climate pollution by 2030, address historic injustices, and create thousands of green new jobs. Do you agree with the resolution's goals of eliminating our city's greenhouse gas pollution by 2030? And if so, what is your plan to achieve this?
So I'm definitely in agreement with the goal of, obviously, you know, reducing our carbon emissions, getting to become a carbon-zero city or a carbon-neutral city. And the thing that I really think we need to look at, and it's actually funny, this has come from in the campaign this year, doing a lot of ride-alongs with the police department. I don't see why we're not using more hybrid vehicles and electric vehicles for our police force. The fact is, we've got a lot of cars that are going around constantly, and that is quite the carbon footprint. I know there are a lot of other things we could do with respect to green building and things like that, but that, examining that within the police department, sort of why some of the reasons are we haven't done that before, because I know there are issues with they're not fast enough and they're not going to be able to, you know, catch a, you know, catch a speeder or catch a criminal, but I think we can address that. And I know myself, after having switched from a Dodge Ram to a Ford Fusion Hybrid, there's a tremendously positive upgrade in your carbon footprint, the mileage you get and everything, and that's something that should be everywhere in the city.
So there's three things that I'm working on related to climate change right now, and I do support the goals of the resolution, the details, and the details. We have just recently revealed our first electric trucks for recycling and garbage. We're one of only a few cities in the nation that have electric garbage trucks now. I'm working on proposing changes to construction code that requires developers to have recycling facilities on each floor of the building for all three-way streams. And then finally, we're looking at reducing single-use plastics.
Like the two people here at the table with me, I support the Green New Deal, but the lack of substance is what troubles me, so I think this question has to do with how would we achieve those goals. My biggest idea for climate change is inspiring our businesses and our large entities like our universities to achieve carbon neutrality. That's something that's happened quite a bit throughout the country, most notably down in the Bay Area. What I would like to do as a component of that is have a carbon credit fee where people could, businesses could pay into that, into a fee that would help low-income homeowners achieve, reduce their carbon footprint.
I think in general, we as a city, if we're going to do this, because there are definitely issues within the details, however, I think the goal is aspirational. I think it's something we should, we have to be looking at. And so to that end, I think the city itself, in the city buildings and the city departments, they need to be pushed to get to carbon neutrality as quickly as humanly possible, because as a city, if you're going to ask builders, if you're going to ask developers and other people to reach that same goal, we should be ahead of the game, and we should be carbon-neutral first.
All right, thank you very much. How's everyone doing? Is it okay? Good, all right. So Lisa, we're back to you. Permitting issues seem to be a large deterrent to some of our small business community from further expanding. What steps can we take in to lighten the burden and encourage more businesses to expand locally?
Well, making the permitting process more timely and efficient is, I think, top of the list. We actually just received a briefing from the Planning and Permitting Office this week in committee, and they have a plan for improvement, but I think the bottom line is we need that office to have more staff so that they can be processing permits more quickly. They have a huge backlog, and we have this new Acela system that is also making things more difficult and making it difficult not only for people who are trying to get permits, but also neighbors who are trying to track the progress of a project and give the and give their own inputs to the development of projects as they come online. So the Planning Office needs more resources and they need to be held accountable to a course correction plan.
I agree that the Planning Office needs more resources. I think that's one of the biggest points of feedback I get from business owners, particularly contractors, is that it takes so long to get a permit for your project and that can delay your ability to increase your revenue that is related to that. I'm a big fan of streamlining things and going through paperwork processes and determining what we need to do, what we don't need to do. And I think in this case, the staffing issue is obviously a component of that. And it's appropriate, given the funds that are related to this, to hire additional staff as needed.
Yeah, the thing we need to add is, we need to add is fast track to that process for the permitting and for the planning for small businesses. There was a restaurant that just opened in West Seattle that took eight months to get a permit for a hood for their grill. All the time they're paying the rent on their property, and that's absurd. This is why I'm going to have a small business liaison in my office. And this is why I want the Office of Economic Development to be on its toes, to make sure that if there's a small business that wants to do something, to add, to expand, to create more jobs, that it's easy to do it and fast.
Yeah, the only thing I have to add is that the mayor's office has made some really good progress in this area recently. She's established a citywide review team, which has representatives from every department in the city to work together to troubleshoot problems like this as they arise. And they have also hired a point person, a citywide business advocate, to serve as a point person for businesses that are trying to navigate the system with multiple departments.
Thank you very much. Brandon, this question goes to you. Over the past three years, we have seen the minimum wage rise. We have seen secured scheduling come into being. An attempt to put in place a head tax. The business license fees have increased several times. Do you think taking all of these things together have been beneficial or harmful to the West Seattle business community?
Well, I can tell you the overwhelming feedback I've gotten from the business community is that it's harmful. I worked for the SPD for over 10 years and one big frustration is the business owners were told that they were paying into a fee to hire more officers and we haven't seen more officers. My theory is that, because I know how hard it is to hire officers, we took one bucket of money and replaced it with another. The reality is, the SPD had to give back $3.5 million to the general fund at the end of last fiscal year because they couldn't hire enough officers. The head tax, we're still seeing the detrimental effects of that. Amazon is moving jobs to Belgium. When I saw that they were going to move, I think, 8,000 jobs by 2023, to me, that meant they were giving us one more council term. That's in 2023, we'll be having another election and they're not going to give us another chance at that point. We need to be in a more business-friendly environment. You talked about secure scheduling, minimum wage. Those are things that I think still need to be studied a little more. People do need a secure schedule, but it can be inconvenient for their boss.
I would say quite simply, talking to the nearly 100 business owners in District 1 that support me in my campaign, all I hear is that it's too much pressure put on businesses. When you find out that Jack Miller can't hire as many kids to scoop ice cream, that different businesses don't have the money to give donations to schools and charities and other organizations, those things tell me that it's too much pressure from the city. The city is failing to promote prosperity and it's failing to be there to be a partner with the business. And that's what we have to work on.
So this is a very good business climate for large business. There's a reason why we have 1,000 people moving to this region every single week. We have more cranes in the sky than any other city. We also have the lowest, the largest job growth rate and the lowest unemployment. We had 40 million visitors to our city last year, setting a record for nine years in a row. This is a very good business climate for large business. It is not a good business climate for small business. And the way to address that is to address our regressive taxation system.
So the question is, can tell me?
No problem. So the one thing I didn't get to touch on in my first minute was minimum wage. That is a justice-based issue, of course. People do need to pay, be paid an adequate wage. But the jury is still out as to where the line is. At what point is our minimum wage costing people jobs? I've talked to small business owners who say they can't afford to hire as many people as they would like because of the minimum wage. I think there still needs to be academic research done in that field to make sure we have exactly the right wage out there.
Thank you, I apologize. Now this question goes to you. Do you support rent control and how would you stretch it?
No.
I support removing the prohibition against any regulation on rent in state law. I don't know what form of rent regulation is appropriate because we haven't had the conversation. We've not been able to have the conversation. But there is a statewide prohibition against any rent regulations at all in our state law. And I do support removing it so that we can have that conversation.
No, I do not support rent control. I support our city council respecting federal, state, and other local laws. Rent control currently is not legal within the state of Washington, just like the various income taxes hadn't been legal. And we're seeing some interesting things in the courts going on with that right now. Injection sites are not legal. We need to accept the fact that that's federally and at the state and local level illegal. We as a council need to stay in our lane and follow the law.
Yeah, I still don't support rent control.
Okay, ready for another lightning round? It's pretty exciting, right? So the screen is yes and red is no. Lightning round, yes or no? Is there a food desert in Delridge? Do you support grassroots neighborhood planning? Is the $15 minimum wage working as anticipated? Do you think that foot patrols by SPD in our business districts would be an effective use of SPD resources? Do you favor performance-based budgeting that shows revenue sources? And that was lightning round number two. Thank you very much. Lisa, this question for you. We have watched the budget for Seattle Pro in an amazing pace over the last three years. Can you name one item that you think needs to be trimmed or cut back?
Sorry, this might go to the answer. I think we need to cut the First Avenue streetcar. It is not a proven transportation infrastructure. It is really, really about, I call it the shopping trolley. And I think that corridor is well-served by transit. And I think those dollars could be much better used for other transportation needs, including other more effective transit needs.
So as I've been saying throughout this campaign, I don't think it's about one area of the budget we need to trim. I think we need to review our entire budget and make sure we're spending our resources effectively. If you're bloating your numbers, if there's opacity to how you budget and how you spend, it's not effective to just spend a little less. It's about having the courage to go in, review all the numbers, make sure we're getting every penny out of our dollars that we have.
Yeah, I think very similarly, where we need to trim and cut is when we do some audits of our city departments and we find out where there's some inefficiencies, where money is not being spent well, those are the places. I know Mayor Durkin a while ago had said that we're in a boom time. Every department should look at 10% that they could cut from their budget because at some point, the economic times will change. And so to that end, we need to audit those systems in those departments and we need to figure out exactly where we should be cutting throughout the budget.
I think just one thing I'd like to add, as it relates to preparing for a downturn, we have two different types of rainy day funds and we have funded them to the maximum statutory allowed amount for both of those funds in preparation for a recession or hopefully just a dip of a downturn.
So, boy, will we have a question for you, Brandon. Yes. With the recent talk of repurposing some of the acreage associated with the Parks Department-owned golf courses, will you continue to support Initiative 42 or would you rather vote to overturn it?
Definitely.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's to break. I know the way to ask that.
No, I would not vote to overturn Initiative 42 for two reasons. One is that I do want to respect the fact that the citizens, I believe in 1996 passed this. That doesn't mean we can't undo it. That would certainly be an option. But we do want to respect the intent of that legislation, which is to keep our green spaces green, keep areas in the city for recreation, for a certain amount of revenue generation, and not sacrifice the culture and the livability of our neighborhoods for construction and for development. The reality is, once you develop spaces like that, you never get it back. And there's an extreme benefit to having golf courses and parks and wooded areas and nature. And to me, as a parent, I'm very interested in my kids being able to have those opportunities to experience things like that. And once they have cement and homes on them, then you never get that back.
Yeah, no, I would absolutely support I-42 staying there. I mean, being able to replace green spaces acre for acre if the city's going to sell something off is important. And that is space that we can't get back if we get rid of it. The municipal golf courses are good for us. They are good space. They allow people access to the outdoors, to activity. They are low cost. They have great programs for girls. They have great programs for immigrants. It is a wonderful thing to have. I will support completely keeping I-42 in place and making sure that we do not give up the golf courses we have because they provide a lot of money for the Parks Department.
I support the principles of I-42, absolutely. I do listen to all the folks in District 1 and particularly the folks in the Junction have been very frustrated with the fact that the golf course counts against their open space. And so whenever they go to the Parks Department to try to get funding to purchase more open space, Parks Department says, you have the golf course, you have enough open space. So if you take a look at the consultant report that a lot of people are talking about, it's very good for golf, but it talks about maybe repurposing some of the golf courses to, like St. Andrews in Scotland, to make it have a multipurpose use for stuff other than just golf.
So there's a certain sentiment that I hear around the support for this move to develop our golf courses, that somehow golf courses are bourgeois and unattainable to most people. When I was working for the Public School District, I worked at ASMRs or Middle School over on Beacon Hill. We dealt, our class was a lot of lower-income kids. One of the activities we would take them to every week was we'd take them to the driving range of Jefferson Golf Course. So these do impact people all across the city from all walks of life. I do think they're important to maintain.
All right, last question goes to Phil. You guys have been great about holding the applause. We're getting through this, it's awesome. So it could be the last question and then everyone's going to go, we're going to go one, two, three again and have closing statements. Okay, so last question, Phil. Inside of District 1 is a neighborhood with one of the lowest life expectancies in the city. Do you know this neighborhood and what can the city do about it?
I, what's funny is, I'm pretty sure it's South Park, but I remember actually in 2015 also the air quality in North Delridge being an issue. But we need to keep up with the cleanup down there. One of the interesting things I saw is the desire to put more of the natural plant life in back there that would do a better job of scrubbing the air that we're getting right now. But in general, the biggest thing is not forgetting that this is an issue, that we need to work on making that area cleaner. It's an industrial area. You know, we're going to have, our airport is going to double in the number of flights we have coming in and out of there over the next 25 years. That's another thing that we have to look at. So I think in general, it's supporting right now the ecological efforts that are down there, our ability to study what's going on, and also to keep pace with whatever's happening in the world in terms of working on cleaner air quality and better green building methods, that we are always at the forefront of what we can do. And so it's the city's job, in my opinion, to make sure that the focus is down there in South Park, that we understand what's going on and that we're measuring what's going on in the air quality and water quality.
So yes, I think also it is South Park. And I feel really strongly that we need to continue to invest in programs like the Duamish River Opportunity Fund, which allows the community to come together to identify healthy environmental projects that benefit the whole community and actually put young people to work in implementing those projects. I support programs like the Economic Development Initiative, which focuses investments in high displacement risk areas and also working with historical leaders in the area to pay for the pieces of the context.
Yes, to my knowledge, that neighborhood is South Park. I recently read a statistic that the life expectancy in South Park is 13 years lower than it is in Laurelhurst, which is north of there. So that's pretty significant and that's very alarming to me. And doorbelling in the neighborhood, the people there are aware of this issue. They're aware of air quality. You ask them what their top three issues are, it's air quality. Nine out of 10 times will be one of their issues. So we need to continue our obligations to the Superfund Site to mitigate the pollution from the local vehicles.
Yeah, in general as well, just down there, as things change, as we get more people moving in, as more businesses open up down there, we do just have to be careful about monitoring. Monitoring air quality, water quality, what's going on in the soil down there. And what's great, we've got the University of Washington, Seattle University, the Department of Ecology. We've got a lot of incredibly intelligent people who want to keep up with the Duamish cleanup and who are focused on this. So I think as a city, we just support them the best we can.
Well, that's great, guys. Thank you so much. Now, final comments, three minutes. Lisa?
Thank you. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I want to thank you for your civic engagement, for caring about District 1 and for all that you do. Those of you that are business owners, those of you that aren't, to make West Seattle a really special place to live. I've lived here since 2000. I raised my daughter here. I have grandchildren who live in High Point and I care deeply about this neighborhood and I work really, really, really hard for West Seattle. I mentioned earlier that business owners reach out to me regularly from all over the city to get my help. So do constituents. I am known to have risen the bar in this city for what it means to deliver constituent services, to make sure that communities are getting the investment of city services that they deserve to improve their neighborhoods. So whether or not it's working on repairing the streetlights on a street where there have been assaults or making sure that an abandoned building gets boarded up in your neighborhood or fixing the pothole or lobbying in favor of the crosswalk for safe routes to schools where your kids go to school. These are the ways that I lift your voices so that City Hall listens and really understands that they need to respond in a way that reflects your contribution as a member of this city and as a taxpayer. And I really believe that when I am working to lift your voices on working on those issues, those smaller sort of nuts and bolts, everyday walk of life things, that when we do that and we are successful, then I'm showing you that I understand and I will always remember that I work for you. The things that I work on in this city are things that have been identified by people in this district as their priorities. And that's how I spend my time, day in and day out, is working on the things that you have identified as your priorities. This job has changed a lot since it's turned into a district position. We didn't used to do constituent work. Now, half of my time and my staff's time is spent doing constituent work. A lot less time on policy work. But I really believe that this is really good time invested and spent because when you believe that I'm working for you at City Hall, then you believe in your government, you believe in your democracy. And that is when we can start working together and being more effective on working on the really big issues, the big challenges, the things like homelessness and affordable housing and transportation. I believe that that is the way, the old adage, as it relates to politics, is that you act locally and that's how you work on the big issues and succeed in making our city and our world a better place. Thank you.
Thank you once again to everybody for coming out. This is a really great crowd tonight. I'm really inspired by how many people chose to take their Thursday evening to come and listen to us talk. That's what motivates me to come to these events. It's not always easy at the end of the day, but it's all about connecting with people. And I hope you've heard something here tonight that you like. The question that I would like to leave you with, as we're about to leave pretty soon, is, are you happy with how things are in Seattle? Do you feel like the city is on the right track? To me, the answer is no. It's not on the right track. Our homelessness epidemic is very sad. It's, there doesn't appear to be an exit strategy. If it is not sustainable, we need change. Our public safety is at the point of crisis. It just really is. I'm very, very concerned about our public safety. Fiscal responsibility, I think everybody has concerns with how we spend money here in the city. Speaking with the business owners, reaching out to you, talking to you, I haven't spoken with a single business owner here in West Seattle or in South Park. I haven't spoken with a single business owner here in West Seattle or in South Park who felt that the, that the money that they were contributing was, was a fair amount or that it was used effectively. And that if it does impact their bottom line, you take money from businesses, that's less they have to pay their employees to, to, to make us a salary. It's, it's very difficult, and I spoke with a lot of business, businesses who are talking about leaving. To me, that means things need to change. We are not on the right track as a city. I'm not a small business owner myself, I make no claim to be one. Colding for District One is a relatively successful business. It's raised a lot of money, but it will eclipse by Thanksgiving regardless. But where I come from, I'm very concerned about homelessness. I'm very concerned about public safety. And as a parent, I'm very concerned about the experience my children have living here in Seattle. It's very important to me. I'm not originally from here, but this is the only home that they know, so I'm fighting for it from, for them. I did a volunteer cleanup project on the Longfellow Creek Park path very close to my house a few weeks ago. We recovered over 100 used hydropneurmic needles from two vacated encampments. Some of them are still loaded with heroin. I take my kids walking down there all the time, that's frightening to me. How did it get to be that way? My six-year-old once found a hydropneurmic needle. He didn't get hurt, but he found it in the sand at Alka. That's where Seattle was founded, that's where the Denny party landed, and we're somehow numb to that right now. You never used to, you never used to experience that in Seattle, but we're at that point of crisis. And so if you, if you don't think the city's going the right way, if you, if you think we can do better, which I know we can do better, then it's time for change. And I would sincerely appreciate your consideration for your vote. The election day itself is in 19 days. I checked my mail before I came, my ballot isn't there yet. I hope it's going to show up tomorrow. Yours, yours will be there soon if it isn't already there. My name's Brendan Colding, and I sincerely appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you again to everybody for coming to the West Seattle Chamber of Commerce for putting this on. This is what democracy is about. You come out, you listen to the candidates, you ask questions, you hear what they have to say. It's one of the things that's incredibly important. We're facing a lot of problems right now, that we're not doing a very good job dealing with it. But remember, the representative that you sent to council from District One, they don't need to just deal with the problems that we have right now. You need to feel comfortable that you're going to send a representative that can deal with the problems that are going to come down the road that we haven't seen, the ones that we don't know about yet, that are going to become an issue for us later. And you want someone who is best equipped to be able to handle that. The thing with politics is you bring people with new experiences to the table. You bring people who haven't been there before, but who have been in your community, who have been business owners and teachers and things like that, because that's how we expand our knowledge base for our government. I know myself, I live in Arbor Heights, I've got my son going to Arbor Heights Elementary School, and I want this city to do better. I personally want to see it do better. I thank Lisa for raising the bar on constituent services. However, you know what? It's time to raise that bar 10 times higher. We need to listen, we need to reach out, we need to talk to the people in our community that have been here for 70 years and the people that just arrived. We need to make sure that everybody feels like they can be part of this government to talk about what they need and what they want, and to not make sure that the government is just happening to them. We can do so much better in this city. Our criminal justice system can be more effective. We can help the people on the street. We don't have 100,000 homeless in Seattle, we have less than 13,000. We can deal with that problem if we put our mind to it and we start focusing on problem-solving and removing the bureaucracy and removing the politics and removing the partisan politics from what's in the way. There is so much we can do, and we need new people to step up and do it. Remember, four of the city council seats that are open this year are going to be new council representatives. We are very likely going to have a completely new majority in our council, and this is the opportunity to pick those people that we want as our representatives. And when I say that to you, pay attention. You obviously heard us all tonight, but there's a lot more. What do we know about other things? What do we feel about education? What do we talk about the topics that haven't been mentioned tonight? And so the ballots are in the mail, and remember, last time, we only had 17,700 people vote out of 61,000 for a primary. That's not good, because I guarantee you, all 60,000 people had an opinion about what happened after that. So when you have that ballot in front of you, and we go forward, and the general comes after this, pay attention, do your homework, talk to people, make sure you're making a choice to have the representative that you want standing up for what you believe is important. And so for that, I want your vote. Thank you.
I want to thank you all. I want to thank all three candidates for coming tonight. I really appreciate it. It would have been really weird for all of us to be here looking at it at this stage. I want to thank the blog for coming, as always. And all of you, thank you so much for coming because it would have been really weird if I was just standing here by myself. I don't need to tell the people who came out on a rainy night to do this, to vote. So what I need you guys to do is call the two people that you think are least likely to vote and try to get them to. Thank you very much. I think you guys are going to be hanging out in the lobby for a little bit. Everyone's welcome to stay, you did a really good job on time.